You're watching another Rider Nation Station presentation. Brought to you by TSC and in cooperation with the St. Mary's Rotary Club.
Uh, this is a little psycho if you want to thank Don Regula for being here today. Uh, he has just stepped down from a total of 12 years of service with the county. Uh, and that'll have to on January 1st, 2 or 3?
3.
Oh, 3, okay. And I didn't know that till today, but it's a three commissioners staggered. January 1st, 1, 2nd, 2nd, 3rd, 3rd. So, today we have two very qualified candidates. We will let them introduce themselves. Um, Rotary is a non-political organization, but we want they both to be very aware of, educated when they step into the voting room. There is no democratic challenger for Don's open position. Alls we have is two Republicans running, so therefore the primary March 17th will in essence be the election. So, sit back, relax, listen to what the candidates got to say, go put up your money, make up your own decisions, how you would like to vote. With that, gentlemen, would you please come up? Yesterday, we ran the same debate at New Bremen, New Knoxville. Mr. Bumbacher went first and Mr. Henderson had last words, therefore we reverse that order today. Mr. Henderson, go for three minutes, please.
What an energetic club Rotary. And I'm not just talking about the, uh, the auctioneer. I, I never, uh, thanks for clarifying that. I never knew what they actually said, but it was hey batter batter. So, anyway, I'm Steve Henderson. Uh, I've been the president of City Council in Wapakoneta for 22 years, Vice President of, uh, Wapakoneta Area Economic Development Council for 15 years. And, uh, the commissioners have, for some reason, trusted me and they appointed me to the board, the most, and you'll hear me talk about this board, uh, a few times in some of these questions, but to the, uh, Mental Health and Recovery Services of Allen, Augways, and Hardin Counties. Um, I've been on many boards of directors, but none as rewarding as, as this board. We actually had a board meeting, uh, this morning. Uh, I actually am the treasurer of that board now. We have about a $10 million budget. Coleman Services is about half of that. A little bit about me, um, Deb's Wes could verify. I think she was planning on heckling me. I like to talk, so I'll, it's, it's not difficult to keep these under three minutes, but I, uh, graduated from Wapakoneta Senior High School in 85, uh, the Ohio University, uh, home of, uh, Sidney Albert as well. I just graduated a few years before her, cum laude, and I moved back to Wapakoneta and fell in love with my, a high school sweetheart, Tanya. Uh, we've been married, it'll be 30 years in August. We have four unbelievable kids. Uh, our oldest aunt, or our oldest Emily and Connor Metz. Emily got her Masters in Speech Pathology, uh, and teaches in Salina, uh, City Schools, and, and gave us our first grandson, Lucas is eight months. I typically don't touch him, touch the grandkids until they can throw a ball back, and he's getting close. Uh, Annie Frost married Taylor, uh, and she gave us a beautiful little granddaughter, Avery Jade, um, and she's three months old. Uh, our son Adam, and I said this yesterday, graduated from Ohio, from Ohio State University. He was a three-sport athlete. Um, I had fun with Isaac Fitzgerald, which is a name athletically around here. Congratulations to you guys, uh, on your WBL championship in wrestling. Uh, I think you're great at bowling, great athletic teams. And then our youngest, Kate, is a, is a junior, or junior at Bowling Green State University in Visual Communications. So, uh, when I got back to Wapakoneta, they're, they're like, if you don't get your wife out of here, you'll never get her out of here. Uh, it was the best thing I ever did. Um, and I, you know, my, we lost my beautiful mother-in-law to breast cancer, uh, September 7th, 7, or September 6th, seven years ago. She was a third of 20 children, um, and it's just a fantastic family. I said yesterday, I think we had 650 guests at our wedding and about 75 were my side of the family and the rest were my wives. But anyway, thank you to the St. Mary's Rotary Club and New Bremen and Knoxville Rotary Clubs. I think this is a well-put-together by, by Mr. Elsoss and his committee, um, and I look forward to, uh, to today's questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bumbacher. Same three opening minute. Minute, please.
First of all, thank you to, uh, the St. Mary's Rotary for having us today. We had a great discussion yesterday in New Bremen and look forward to that also today. Uh, as, as has been said, my name is David Bambar. I'm from New Knoxville, 1978 graduate. Went to Northwestern Business College in Lima. After that, graduated in higher accounting. Uh, Northwestern Business College is now UNOH, if, if that doesn't ring a bell. Uh, came back to the, uh, family business, uh, been there 40 years. We grew that business from one location to three. Bambar fertilizer and seed, if, if you don't recognize, uh, where we are, we're outside of New Knoxville, out on 219 Kellerville Road. My involvement, uh, in the community has been quite intensive over the last 40 years. I served, uh, Washington Township as fiscal officer for 23 years. I've been on, uh, numerous boards within the, within the village and, uh, currently I, uh, serve quite a bit with my church, first church in New Knoxville. I'm a lay leader there, uh, teach catechism to the, the junior high kids, and I serve our church as a board member on the Agape Ministries here in St. Mary's. That's probably the board that I like to talk about the most and I'm, I really probably don't need to touch too much on it because you people over in St. Mary's know what Agape does and, and how well, uh, they take care of the people in St. Mary's, uh, as long, as well as New Bremen, Minster, and, uh, New Knoxville. Uh, my wife Judy is here today with me. I have two daughters. Uh, my oldest daughter Abby is the fiscal officer for the village of New Knoxville. Married Rick Homan. Two children, Luke, who's age five, and Addison is two and a half. Best thing that ever happened in my life was grandkids. Uh, I got more time to spend with them than I think I did my own daughter, so we really enjoy them. My younger daughter Hannah, uh, also graduated, well, Abby graduated from Wright State University in Finance. My youngest daughter Hannah graduated from Wright State University in Middle School Education. Uh, bless her heart, she teaches algebra to eighth grade students in Ossean, Indiana for Norwell Middle School, um, and she lives in Decatur, Indiana. No children at this time, but, uh, we're all hoping and waiting, so, um, I guess that's probably all I have for my bio.
Okay, stay right there. First question. Seems like a lot of help wanted signs all over the place. Yay. Problems seem to be that there's no available, affordable housing. Is there a county program available to address this problem, or does it fall on private contractors and individuals?
Uh, no, there's no county program that I know of that deals with housing, and I don't feel that, uh, that it's the county that needs to address this issue. Uh, housing is generally left to the cities or villages because they have the resources in sewage and water to accommodate, uh, homes better than the townships do. The, you know, the county runs on tax dollars that come from all places in the county, and I think it would very, be very unfair as a commissioner if you would pick and choose to where the homes should go in the county. Uh, everybody's got a different view of what kind of house they want, where they want to live. Uh, I think the younger generation has got more of a sway towards rental or condominiums, and the older generation has got more, uh, apt to wanting their own home in a subdivision or something like that. But I think that's up to the private market out here and the, and the individual person, not, it's not a county issue in my opinion.
Thank you. Mr. Henderson, same question, two minutes.
Yes, two minutes. We do have a housing issue, there's no question about that. I think it was addressed two years ago. Uh, Mayor McGowan, I, I think they did a summit, uh, in St. Mary's, and to address this, they had realtors, contractors, and different things. We have the jobs, as I mentioned, uh, being on the Board of Directors of Economic Development. We've had a few good years, um, with Flex Arm. Nick Kennedy is a client and invested 5.2 million dollars in our job-ready site. The Greenhouse, uh, you've got 20 acres under, under glass, and, uh, and then most recently, Pratt Industries, which you're very familiar with, I'm, I'm sure. Um, all, you know, we've got, we've got the workforce and, and, and where do we house them? So, hopefully that is addressed. It's not necessarily a county issue, but, uh, I know in Wapakoneta, I put it into committee. Uh, they've had various meetings trying to address that problem, um, and I'll, I'll probably talk about, I've been endorsed by Mayor Walz in Creatorsville. There's, I can't speak too much to what's going on in Creatorsville, but it, but it, in the next five to 10 years, uh, it would not only address the, the, uh, the housing issue, it would, it would, it would go very, very far with that housing, housing issue. Um, and it's a great question. I know that, uh, the commissioners have, uh, have through Shelley Bucy or Bussy or, you know, she's with Ambi Ohio, or Ambi Alliance, and I think she, she ran, you know, so they're on the workforce portion of the, of the problem as well, housing and workforce. And I can't, I, I won't be able to name everyone, but Keith Warner, uh, serves on that. Don Herod on, on Economic Development, representing the village of Minster, serves on that. Jackie Martell, our Chamber Director in Wapakoneta, and a few other key people. So, it is on the commissioner's radar, uh, and it should be. Workforce issues, housing issues, um, and I agree with, I agree with my opponent.
Stay right there. Mr. Henderson, please. Next question. County engineer Doug is always showing us how many miles of county roads are getting repaved or patched. In past several years, it's been less than 20 miles. The county has about 385 miles. Can we get 15, 20 years out of our roads, or how do we address the problem with gradually decaying roads?
That's a great question, and actually, you know, the county, under his jurisdiction, and I think they've done a great job with the $5 million budget, it's about 350 miles. And it's not 20 miles, it's actually eight miles that they have been able to take care of, or with the limited resources that they have. So, they, the state legislature passed in 2003, 90% of that budget is made up of the gas tax and plate tax. Uh, that had not been increased over 16 years, so we had 16 years of inflation, and, and Mr. Reinhardt has been very judicious, as have the 14 township and their trustees, in, in taking, taking care of what they could take care of with their limited resources that they have. In late 2019, the state legislation finally came through, uh, with another gas tax increase. So presently, I think it's about 43% of, of Mr. Reinhardt's budget was made up of that, of those two, the gas taxes is a major proportion. That will change in, in the second half of 2020 and go to 53%. So, kudos to him and kudos to our commissioners for, you know, addressing the problem, and kudos to the state legislator for, I mean, we've had inflationary periods. Uh, to put a number on that, I think it takes, back in 2003, probably $13,000 to, uh, to do one mile, or whatever, and, uh, of hot mix. Uh, and, and as of today, it's gone up about 266%. You know, it's about 75,000. So, like I said, I think our county engineer has done a great job, and our commissioners currently have done a great job with the limited resources, and I think, thank the state legislation for addressing the problem because you've got more fuel-efficient vehicles. Um, we've got 340 bridges, uh, that don't have weight limits, but now that, now the state's been involved, so, I mean, not too many counties can say that, that they have, uh, weight limit restrictions. I think there might be a few of the 340, given the new, uh, emergency vehicles, uh, that they might have to label those. Uh, those, those bridges were there before these new vehicles, uh, came about, so, uh, I think I can't say enough about our commissioners and, uh, and/or the engineering department.
Mr. Bumbacher, same question, two-minute response.
Uh, I would agree with Mr. Henderson on a couple of those things, and, and one is, we should be awful proud of the county engineer and, and the county crew that we have in this county. Don, Doug Rega, Doug Reinhardt has done an outstanding job. Uh, my 20-some years as, as a fiscal officer in Washington Township, I can tell you, I saw firsthand the rise in the cost of hot mix. We used to have three bidders that came in and bid those jobs, and we're down to one. We pay more for hot mix in Augways County than they do in Chubby County, and we're only a few miles away. Doesn't always make sense to me, but I guess that's the way it is. Since we had a limited amount of resources, or Doug has to hot mix, he's went to chip and seal, strip sealing, go sealing, different methods on some of the less-used roads particularly to try to make them roads last longer. Now, my conversation with Andrew Ballmer last week at the county, they're going to do 32 miles this year, or they hope to, as long as the asphalt price comes in where they think it's going to come in, which is quite a bit extra since the gas tax money started to increase last year in the second quarter. So this year, well, they'll see the full increase, the whole year, which will be, uh, an added benefit to them. Uh, but, you know, what, what comes in the future is a question in my mind, because right now, if you buy a hybrid car, you pay $150 more at, at the License Plate Bureau. If you buy an electric car, you pay $200 more when you get your license plates. How many gallon gas will an electric car use? And then when, when we see that GM and Ford and all them want to go to nothing but electric cars in a few years, or electric vehicles, how long will it be before all the vehicles will be electric, which is fine, but then what do we use to maintain those roads? That's going to be another question we all deal with. Our bridges in this county are in excellent shape, and that, again, we can credit Doug for that. His guys work tirelessly during the winter to build concrete boxes and different things that they can do by the law, uh, to repair those bridges in our county. When you get to a span that's a certain length, and I, I'm not sure what that span is, then they have to go to a state contract and have other people build them, them bridge beams, but otherwise, they've done an awfully good job with our infrastructure in this county, which is very important when it comes to economic development.
Stay right there. Next question. How will you work in the best interest of all entities of Augways County, the townships, villages, and cities?
Well, I think, I think the answer to that question in my mind is that when we look at how the county is funded through the tax base, taxes come from everywhere in the county. So, the commissioners have to make those decisions that will benefit everyone equally. We can't pick and choose, uh, villages, or cities, or certain townships that we want to help in a certain way. That, those tax dollars have to be spent, uh, where all individuals or all people within the county benefit. And I noticed today, when I came to the meeting and I was reading, uh, the sign behind Mr. Henderson here, a lot of those things, those four things, really, they apply to county government, or even they should apply to our national government, too, that we do things that benefit everyone in the right way. And I, I think that's the whole precept behind the question, and my answer is, that we have to look at the county as a whole and all the taxpayers and try to make decisions that benefit everyone in that manner.
Thank you. Mr. Henderson, same question.
Hey, I definitely agree. Uh, I'd like to see the, the county commissioners become more involved with, uh, not just the villages, but all the municipalities, um, not just Wapakoneta, not just St. Mary's, but, you know, there's a House Bill 6 that, that, uh, should be on their radar, and I think they've done a, a fine job with that. Um, it kind of goes back to, you know, one of the questions was, it's divisive, and I agree with my opponent. I, you know, I guess I'm the, the guy or the candidate from the east, um, and he's the candidate from the west. To me, that's not divisive, but, uh, when I get elected county commissioner, I want to do what's best for all the citizens in Augways County. Every single one, every, every village, every, every city. Um, and I think, I think our current administration, uh, does that, they do a great job with that. Wapakoneta has to be, you know, just happens to be the county seat, but, uh, I think, uh, they would give an award for plays well with others, um, if I was to give that award out.
Stay right there. Next question. Virginia has 96 of their 99 counties that have passed legislation to make them Second Amendment Sanctuary Counties. What, how would you feel about that for Augways County?
Well, I, you know, that, it's a, it's, it's not on, it's, it's not a commissioner thing, and it, and it's, uh, actually, when, probably when the questions came out, it's a moot point. Virginia, their senate, uh, had the foresightedness to, uh, to defeat that, so it is a moot point, but I'm a strong Second Amendments, uh, person. I'm an avid bowhunter. I've traveled all over the, the country, um, hunting, and, you know, I, I got a really nice black bear up in seven hours north of Winnipeg, um, in, in Manitoba. Uh, so, don't, you know, don't mess with my guns. I think the far-left is going, they're, you know, almost saying anything, and I know my opponent has integrity, and I'd like to, like to think that I do. I'm not going to say something, uh, just to, to run on a platform. I'm going to tell you the truth whether you want to hear it or not, but, you know, don't take my guns, um, don't take away my constitutional rights that our forefathers, uh, put, put into place over 200 years ago. So, um, I'm glad it's a moot point. I can't believe that it was even discussed, but, uh, but it was, but it is no longer.
Mr. Bumbacher, third question, two-minute response.
My view on that, uh, what has happened in Virginia is probably a little different than what could happen in the county level here in Augways County. County commissioners cannot legislate, okay? The legislation is done at the state level, so the county commissioners do not have the ability to make a law or anything like that. It has to go from the state level. A lot of counties in Virginia pass resolutions to, uh, become Second Amendment Sanctuary Counties, okay? Our county could do the same thing if they wanted to, but it really would be just, um, something that would happen, it could get in the paper, people could see it, maybe it would look good politically. Uh, I think the biggest thing is if you go to our county facilities, the only one that you cannot concealed carry in is the courthouse, okay? The rest of them, if you're concealed carrying and you have that license, you can't conceal carry in, in the other county facilities. So that tells me what view our county commissioners have on that idea. Personally, I, I'm a gun owner, I'm a, I'm a deer hunter, uh, I would never vote against the Second Amendment. Uh, I think that's as sacred as the flag that hangs there. Two issues that are very dear to my heart, that I would stand up for to the end, is that and, uh, abortion. So, I'm pro-life, and I just, uh, feel like those two are things that our country is, is maybe going way too far to left on some things, and that's where I stand on those.
Stay there. Next question. And driving around the county recently has me confused. My understanding was that farmers can't spread manure during part of December, all of January, February, and part of March. Yet I see farmers with their big tractors and manure spreaders loaded and head for the fields. Can they legally do that? Who's in charge of enforcement? Who should I report it to?
That's one question I sort of felt sorry for. Mr. Henderson, yesterday, we got that at New Bremen, because this is right in my wheelhouse with the business that we have at New Knoxville. Uh, we, uh, actually spread chicken litter for farmers, uh, chicken manure litter, whatever you want to call it. It's a very confusing issue for people that aren't involved, and, and the reason why is there's actually three sets of rules that apply in Augways County. The first set of rules is for the Grand Lake watershed, because it was considered a distressed watershed with the lake, okay? So, no manure applied, period, December 15th to March 15th, no matter what, no manure applied. The second law, or issue, comes from the, uh, Ohio Department of Agriculture and Senate Bill, and it says no manure to be applied from March 15th to December 15th in Ohio on frozen ground, or snow-covered ground, or when the weather forecast calls for a certain amount of rain within 24 hours, okay? Now, there's a lot of gray area in that, because if you ever notice the size of the tractors and the equipment that some of these farmers have, they can go through two to three inches of frost in that ground. So, the ground will carry the equipment, they can legally say, well, we could get it tilted, even though maybe they don't get it tilted like they should, they can get it tilted. So, they're in the right, not, they're not being illegal with what they do. The third set of rules applies to people at the CLM, which is a, a license that we, as a business, carry because of the amount of tonnage of litter that we spread during the year. Our regulations are actually stiffer than what it is for the individual farmer, as far as setbacks and timing and the, uh, amount of paperwork that we go through, uh, when we spread manure. We have to have a weather report printed out, we go through a yearly license and inspection, they come in and check all our records and make sure that we're doing things the right way. So, you know, the answer to that question is, it's no wonder that people are confused out here with what goes on. If they have a problem, or somebody sees something they don't think is right, they need to call the local soil and water conservation district, who is a lot of times extremely busy, or you can call the Ohio Department of Agriculture. If you get on their website, they have an 800 number to report those things, so you can, uh, go that route with it, is the right way to answer that.
Thank you. Mr. Henderson, two-minute response, please.
Ditto. I, I'm glad he felt sorry for me. Uh, two things, I, you know, uh, it is, it's the Grand Lake-St. Mary's watershed, it's a two watersheds, but Grand Lake-St. Mary's watershed, and I know he had, I know he knows the dates, and I know this is in his wheelhouse, but if you're somewhat confused, um, it's not March 15th to December 15th, it's December 15th to either March 1st or March 15th. Uh, I know Mother Nature's played a lot of tricks on us, uh, and so it potentially could be March 15th to December 15th. But, uh, no, I, I hope, you know, I've only gotten my big snow blower out, uh, a couple times this year. We've been very fortunate. I did attend the H2Ohio Sidney, when she interviewed me, um, was that a couple weeks ago? I talked about the H2Ohio program. That is a question that, that has come up, I mean, because people near and dear to, uh, Grand Lake-St. Mary's and Mercer County, um, they, they are wondering about the runoff and the phosphorus that, that is getting into our tributaries and, uh, and everything else. So, his wheelhouse, his manure, but, uh, I mean, I'm glad that this, you know, Mike DeWine, Governor DeWine, has put his arms around this. I mean, he's invested $30 million, uh, primarily in the first year for the, uh, for the 30 counties to the northeast and, uh, Lake Erie watershed. But Augways County, Allen County, and many other counties will benefit from a hun, an additional $172 million that has been allocated, and, uh, and it's, God bless our farmers, um, it's a volunteer, it's a voluntary program. God bless our soil and water, because they've got, I think they have a March 31st deadline if you are going to volunteer. Now, at that meeting, I'm not going to say you could hear a pin drop, I think people were, um, confused as to why some city slicker was there, but I, I care about Augways County, I care about our watersheds. Um, I've had various questions asked, asked me, so, uh, I, I, I like to do my research before I speak on a topic, um, and if any farming questions do, do arise, uh, if I'm elected to this position, I'm going to definitely trust in Commissioner Bergman, uh, and maybe even give, uh, Commissioner Regula a call, uh, as well. I'm not taking anything away from Commissioner Spencer, but, uh, if anything farming-wise comes up, I definitely will rely on, on Mr. Bergman's expertise.
Stay right there. Last question, before we go to summations. Women domestic violence against their spouses has seemed to be on the rise. Do we need a male facility for the Augways County Domestic Violence House similar to what exists for the women?
That's a great question, and you don't typically think that there, that there is a female and male domestic violence, and unfortunately, there is. Um, the fortunate part is, that was, that amounted to less than 1% in 2019. I think there were two cases of female and male, um, uh, domestic violence. And speaking with Shirley Longworth, and God bless that woman, she's, you know, the crisis center has been around since 1985, and that, and that, when that got started, it was seven, you know, it was a seven-day program. Shirley's been there since 198, at least 31 years, to my understanding, and, uh, now that's going to, gone to, uh, the crisis center. And they do, they do handle men, female and male domestic violence, but they also handle, probably, unfortunately, it's, it's typically the other way around, and that, they now house, they have 90-day programs, um, they have transportation advocacy programs. I mean, it's a wonderful, it's a wonderful thing for something tragic. I mean, a male should never, no one should lay a hand on, on anyone else, male or female, but, uh, they take care of them and they, they reevaluate every 30 days in the, in these programs, uh, and Shirley could have, she was an educator, she could have retired a long time, a long time ago, but she feels a passion, uh, to, to continue with her services. They meet every 30 days to evaluate and then go, go on to the next 30 days, and hopefully at the end of 90 day, days, they've got the problem solved, or they're, they're on the road to recovery, and they can maybe help them, uh, with food and, not only food and shelter, but transportation, jobs, and, and education. And so that's a, that's a great question, and I think, uh, I think that Augways County has done a great job with that, with that growing problem. I mentioned, uh, I'm on the, uh, the Mental Health and Recovery Services Board of Directors, um, and, you know, that, that, too, I mean, we, speaking to, along those lines, suicide is the number-one violent death, cause of violent death among our young people. I mean, if ages 10 to 14, um, is, is the number-one cause of death, um, and then ages 15 to 34 is the number-two cause, suicide. Um, I know, there's probably no one in this room that hasn't been affected by that in one way or another, unfortunately. So, I'm, I'm glad that Board of Directors, working in conjunction with the county commissioners as an appointment, and the, the local crisis centers in, in all the counties, I think they've done a great job to address that problem.
Thank you, Mr. Henderson. Mr. Bumbacher, two-minute, two-minute answer.
This is one question I have to do some research on. The crisis center is not really see, receive any funding through the county budget, uh, but me and my wife have participated in the past in the crisis center auction, and I always was curious to how the crisis center was funded, and it's through donations, the auction, uh, they actually receive some of the marriage license fees that come, and they get some money through our court system, through, uh, different fines and, and stuff that come that way. So that's how they're sort of funded. The, the crisis center has the, the ability to house women in the county and provide them with all kinds of things that they need. They will provide the same things to male people, that, people that have been abused, but as far as the housing, they do not. Uh, but they will provide alternate housing, to what I would call it, probably a hotel room, uh, is what I think they provide. But there again, they provide, uh, a great service to the people in Augways County that need it, and I agree with Mr. Henderson, it's a sad situation that we have to have that, but it's something that, that is necessary, so.
Mr. Henderson, final three-minute summation, please.
Well, I, you know, I just want to again thank the St. Mary's Rotary Club for this opportunity, um, as I As I mentioned, as we're out knocking on doors, and you're seeing all these ugly green signs pop up, and the nice red, white, and blue signs pop up, it was funny, because I stopped at a farmer that I know well, and he's like, well, he's like, I like both of you guys, and he's like, but I know everything that you've done, this meant a lot to me for the community, you know, for your community. And he's like, so I probably won't get a free t-shirt, and I promised him he would. He's like, I probably won't get a free t-shirt at the county fair, but go ahead and put one up. So it's not about the signs, you know, how many signs you have or whatever, it's about getting out and solving the whatever problem. And one of the questions was, what's the biggest problem in Auglaes County? And my simple answer to that, other than ditto, is I didn't know we had any problems in Auglaes County. I think they've done a strategic, mathematically sound job of doing what county commissioners are elected to do, and I look forward to that continued leadership that I've done over the past 22 years in leading Wapakoneta, and I look forward to taking that on to the county level and doing what's the best for each and every member of Auglaes County. So, and thanks again for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Bumbauer, same three-minute summation.
I guess in closing, my words would be that one thing I probably forgot to tell you is that, you know, I've been in business 40 years in this county, and my brother's three children decided that they wanted more ownership in the business. My daughters aren't interested in the business, so we went through a transition, and I sold my ownership to them a year ago, and we're in this transition phase now. And so I'm going to have more time on my hands, and I was like, okay, my wife doesn't want me at home after I retire. At least during certain times of the day, she said anyways. But, okay, so I love this county. I love living here, I love growing up here, and I always had an interest in county government, and I think I suit that position well because of my past experience, serving as a Washington Township fiscal officer, being in private business, doing my service in my community. I just feel like I have a big overview picture of what goes on in our county, and hopefully I can uphold and do as well as our county leadership has, as long as I can remember. I mean, we just can't ask for much more than what Doug and the commissioners have done for us, in my opinion, in this county. And I just, I look forward to maybe, and it'll maybe serve the people of this county and do the same thing. And I'm happy for any support I get, and I ask for your support, and I think I'm up to the job. So, thank you, Randy.
Thank you, gentlemen. You've conducted yourself very well, we appreciate that. Let's give them a round of applause.
How can I pay it if I can't find it?
You don't need the bill. You can pay it online at tellcirco.com.
Wasn't there a special this month?
Yes, we got it from TSC's Facebook page.
I know I've got the announcement for the club here somewhere.
I just sent it to TSC to air on Channel 2. With tellcirco.com, Facebook, Channel 2, and their newsletter, TSC makes it easy to stay connected.
Now, if they could just help me clean up my desk.
It's easy as one, two, three, call TSC.
Thanks for watching another episode of Writer Nation Station. Help us help you by subscribing on YouTube or following us on Facebook.